Okay, friends, thank you for your patience. We are going live and it looks like we have about 10 people waiting for us, 10 users. So we'll get them to where they can hear us and we'll go from there. All right, so folks online, it looks like you are hearing me. I see around eight to 10 of you. So if you could just write something in the chat box and say, "Hello, I'm here. I can hear what's going on. You look ugly," something like that, I don't know. But just let us know that we've got a pulse here and we'll be going. We could start with a slow, low, little clack in the background. There's a 20 to 30 second delay between us and them. Ah, we're good. They said we can hear you. All right, and they can see us. So we are good to begin. All right, so thank you, folks, for the grace to get this going. This is just what it's like every week here or at Trinity. The technology is tricky and takes all the lineup, but we are live. We are here and by the grace of God, we're going to talk about our church. So, all right, we'll turn it over to our Church Council chair, Debbie.
First of all, welcome when you're online and you're here with about 30 people here. And that is a wonderful showing. We weren't sure how many people we have and this just goes to show how much we care and love our church. So if you would, please, let's start off in a moment of prayer. Heavenly Father, we ask your blessings for this town hall meeting today. We're here today because we love our church. We've been through especially hard times together, but we know where there's love and faith and a strong commitment to work together, we are going to be stronger than ever. May our words and our thoughts today honor you in Jesus' name and prayer. Okay, I'm just going to give you a quick overview of how we're going to run the meeting and this is intended to be interactive. We're going to be sharing some info, a lot of information with you, but we also want to hear from you as well. So just to give you an idea, we do have the meeting being streamed. We are also recording it and for those that cannot attend in person, so we'll be publishing the recording and we'll be also publishing the package that those of you who are in person have in your hands, as well as any notes that are taken during the meeting. Debbie's over here, she's agreed to take detailed notes as we go through and get feedback from you. So all of that, we believe in communication, we believe in transparency, and so all the information will be out there for our whole church family. Just to let you know, each of our major committees within Church Council will be giving you a presentation today. It's not a big formal, long presentation with charts, et cetera. It's just kind of a summary of where we are as a church. So they're going to tell you about their area, so we'll hear from finance, we'll hear from SPR, missions, and also trustees. And we've got a lot of information to share with you and you will find, yes, we have some concerns, but we've got a lot of good news to share with you today. And I think you're going to feel good walking out of here that, yes, we've got some things to work on, but we together, we are doing okay. And that's the message that we want to share with you today. Before we get started with the area updates, Pastor Bryson is going to do a short devotion and kind of share with us also some of the trends that we're seeing within the United Methodist Church in general. So I'm going to hand things over to him at this point. And also, just, I forgot to mention, there's a flip chart over here. You will probably ask some questions today that we won't have the answers for. And you'll probably have some ideas for us that we want to make sure we capture. Next month, we're going to have a Church Council planning session and we're going to take all of the notes, we're going to bring them into that planning session and start looking at, what do we want to do in 2022? It's hard to believe, but we're getting there. So we're going to start doing some planning for next year and we really want your feedback. What do you want to see in our church and what's your feedback from Council going into that session? So I'll take notes as we go through. Debbie will have detailed notes which we'll publish. And without, I'll turn it over to Pastor Bryson.
All right. Let me bring up my Bible. So let me quickly bring it up on my phone. Good thing is I have multiple Bibles on me at all times. They're just my various techniques. All right. So our devotion for this meeting is the parable of the barren fig tree, as you'll find in Luke 13:6-9. It goes like this. Then Jesus told this story. A man planted a fig tree in his garden and came again and again to see if it had produced any fruit, but he was always disappointed. Finally, he said to his gardener, "I've waited three years and there hasn't been a single fig on this tree. Cut it down because it's just taking up space in my garden." The gardener answered, "Sir, give it one more chance, leave it another year, and I'll give it plenty of special attention and fertilizer. If we get things next year, fine. If not, then we can cut it down." God had a blessing to do the reading and the hearing and pondering the Word this morning. So whenever you read a parable in the Bible, you were supposed to kind of connect in with one of the subjects in it. Usually it's the person, in this one, we've got the gardener, we've got the landowner. But have you ever thought about the tree? Have you ever thought about looking at this verse, this parable, from the perspective of the tree? Well, let's do that. So from your vantage point as being this tree, what are some of the reasons you might give to, if this tree can talk, what are some of the reasons it might give to the gardener and the landowner as to why it's not fruitful? Feel free to say out some answers to us.
Not enough water.
Not enough water.
Look at the tree and see what's wrong with it.
Yeah, something's wrong with it. It could be sick.
Yeah. Give me a second chance.
Means a second chance.
Give me a second chance.
Yeah, drought, that's a big one around here. We know about that. Could be sickness, could be age. Older trees may not produce much fruit. What other thoughts do you have? What other thoughts do you have in relation to this verse here?
Might not be in a good location.
Might not be in a good location, yes, indeed. I'll bring that back in a second. All right. I mean, it could have weeds around it, other plants that are stealing its water. Drought, age, bad soil, weeds. There are, if this tree can talk, folks, there are all sorts of things you could tell the farmer and the landowner, the gardener and the landowner as to why it's not producing fruit. So do you notice that none of those reasons are taken into account? The tree always has to produce fruit. It's got a purpose to do. Its job on earth is to produce figs. Now thankfully, Trinity Church is not the tree in the parable, so get that out of your mind. We are producing fruit abundantly in these hard times. I mean, think about all the great things we've done, which we currently do in the Matthew 10:10 snack brigades, a huge, successful ministry. We pioneered every sort of parking adventure under the sun during the heart of the pandemic. We are a fruitful congregation still. We are still providing the fruit that our gardener, that our landowner wants to see. But we have to be honest with ourselves. Some of the soil conditions we're talking about here, they're around us. All those things we brought up about the tree, we could say that about what's around us right now. The soil is not exactly good around us right now, is it? The world's a tough place to grow a church. I mean, there are weeds that might be stealing our water. We're an older tree, that is for sure. I don't think we're sick, although I guess you could count the flood as some sort of sickness. I mean, maybe we got waterlogged. I know plants get waterlogged and they, some of them can die. So maybe we are a bit of a waterlogged plant. Too much water now. We don't have to, don't worry about drought, we're dealing with too much water. So long story short, we have those circumstances around us, yet we can't let those circumstances keep us from producing fruit for Jesus Christ. We have to keep doing the tremendous stuff we're doing. We have to keep the ministry that we are doing for our community going. And that means taking all the soil conditions into account, finding ways to be fruitful despite them. And that's going to mean some changes. That's going to mean we have to do some things differently. We may have to conserve resources and produce less fruit. But this parable never says if a certain amount of fruit has to be produced. It's just the tree has to be fruitful. If we produced one fig, if a tree produced one fig the next year, God's going to keep it around. So we've got a while to go before we're down to that one fruit level, but it's good now to be talking about these forces around us and figuring out how we can best maximize our resources and how we can keep best ministering in the name of Jesus Christ. So the question that will help us do that and the question that I want all of us, whether you're here or online or not, to ponder the rest of this time together is, how do we best serve Jesus Christ where we are at? Despite the conditions we have around us, how do we keep being fruitful? So let those conditions, kind of that question, sit in the back of your mind and give you perspective for all that you're about to hear now. All right, so moving on, I've got, what we're going to be doing here is kind of giving you, you know how you have a satellite picture of a large area of land and then you can zoom down to somebody reading a newspaper on a bench? We're going to kind of be taking that approach here in this presentation. We're going to start off with a massive big picture view of what's happening not just in our church, but in churches all over the United States from the pandemic and other things. And then we're gradually going to zoom it down to what Trinity's dealing with in SPR, in finance, in trustees, in flood recovery, in some of our more close-up areas. So to talk about what's happening large scale, those are the two questions I'd like you to ponder, so keep those in mind. So here are the current soil conditions that not just Trinity Church, but every church in the Grove is facing right now. What I want us to hear is what Trinity Church is experiencing is very typical of most congregations right now. So feeling displaced, looking around, not seeing people in the pews, wondering about the future, issues like that. Everybody, everybody is feeling that way. So according to the experts on all this, those names up there, Tom Mandi, Carrie Neihoff, David Kinman, Tom Munir, they may not mean a lot to you, but these are like some of the best church growth experts, like the church futurists out there who monitor trends and talk about how the church is growing or not, or what they're seeing. Those four are some of the best out there and they all agree that all the trends that churches were dealing with, especially mainline Protestant congregations like us and the United Methodist Church, all the trends churches were dealing with before the pandemic have accelerated. It's like COVID-19, hit a giant fast-forward button on all those issues you see up there. So worship attendance declined, congregation aging and shrinking, budgetary impacts, churches now have less to work with because not as many people are involved, building issues, and I don't need to go any further into that one. Church conflict, that's specifically over, I mean, how churches have dealt with the pandemic. Did they tell people to mask up? Did they tell people not to mask up? Those have been the big ones, but that's not the only conflict that's raging now. There's still a lot in the United Methodist Church going on about the LGBTQ question that's been working, along with many other things, and just the general anxiety of being where we're at. So being in a harder place has accelerated conflict. And then that last one there, increasing use of technology. Again, I don't need to go into that much because we have about 10 to 15 people who are watching me on the camera right now. So that's kind of what we're seeing in the soil. And to give you a little bit more on that, the Barna Group, they're like the Pew Research Center for Churches. They do a lot of surveys and analysis on church attendance trends and cultural trends. They had determined that throughout the pandemic, one out of every three people who were weekly attenders of a church are no longer doing so. Again, this is not just Trinity, this is most everybody. Some of the reasons for that? They moved online. They had health reasons, they couldn't get out when we were in quarantine, so they switched to online and they stayed there, like you all. They just got out of the habit. That's been a big one. When churches not at the same time or in the same place with the same people, it's easy just to say, "Ah, I'm not going to go this week." You stay home and maybe you don't make it to physical worship for a while. Maybe you can't because, I mean, Lord knows, we were out for four or five months before we could get back into our building. So that's one thing we do know. The next stat, it's not very verified, it's not verified yet, but it will be soon. Everybody's pretty sure this is going to be the case. One out of every four church adults, church adults being people who attended worship once every six months, one out of every four of those who were involved in a congregation have left it entirely. So the reason for this, health reasons, not just due to the pandemic, but they might have had a stroke, they might have had dementia act up, they may have had a fall. I mean, goodness, don't we know people from our congregation who fall into that category there? I bet we know people who fall into all these categories. Again, political differences with the church, a lot of people left over that. Disagreement with the larger denomination or regional administration over other issues, not necessarily the group, but scriptural interpretation, LGBTQ stuff, that plays in here. They started attending other churches, so maybe if they got into a disagreement with their local congregation, they started associating with another church. Or many have just left faith entirely. This break we've had, this chance to just sit back and not be in worship, they started to realize, hey, it didn't really mean that much to me. I only went because that's what I always did. It's what my parents told me to do and I don't think I need to do that anymore. So one out of every four church adults who were involved in the congregation, that's somebody who attended six months, every six months or more, have left it entirely. That's not verified, but again, it will be soon, for sure. Where it's left us, most UMCs are averaging about 75, 70% to 75% of their normal attendance, and that includes both the online and in-person numbers. If I had to estimate where we're at, I'd say we are right smack dab in those numbers. We are between 75, 70, 75 of our normal attendance as it was in 2019, between who we have coming in person every week and who we have online joining us. So that has led to drops in our giving. Wanda, correct me if I'm wrong, but we were down 20%, about one point of our giving, and we kind of hovered around 80% of what we were used to, and we're still kind of there. Wanda's nodding, so we're about 80% of our budget of what our budget was in 2019. All right, so what are churches doing in response? Regrettably, many are closing. In the conference we are in, frankly, I have never seen a church closure for 20 years I've been involved. Then last year we had three, this year we're going to have three to five. But it's not all bad news. Churches are innovating. They are trying brand-new things to reach new people. That would include online worship, that would include new use of their building, that would be cooperative ministry with other churches. And one of the great things we're seeing about this, because it's not all bad, is the church is starting to reclaim evangelism. We're starting to realize, hey, we have a great word, we still need to give that out. This is the time to do it. We need to tell people that our church is here, we're still here, and despite everything going on in the world right now, there is hope, there is peace, there is grace. And so a lot of churches have recommended to evangelism, and that's a great thing. And again, just the biggest, biggest change, the online presence of the church has just become mammoth. Hybrid worship is now common, where people are both in the pews and online. And the quote is, "Technology, your website is now the front door of your church." No, this is pretty incredible stuff, right? In just one year, a lot has changed. But keep in mind, this was already progressing this way, it's just fast-forwarded to this. And also keep in mind that we still have the gospel here. How do we remain faithful where we're at? Well, we're going to keep trying to do that. As Debbie said, Church Council's going to do us a lot of strategy work in the next month, some important stuff. We'd love to hear your opinion on that, where you think we should go, how you think we can act. Help us find the Spirit, what it's doing amongst us. Let's get back involved. Let's, we've got some opportunities to serve from up. I mean, getting people into that, getting people volunteering again, that's going to help us put down some more good roots in all this. And finally, that last part, remember that always, the darker it is, the more Christ's light shines out. I mean, if you're in absolute darkness, one candle is huge and blinding. If you're starving, one fig is a feast. We have the potential to do that, to produce light, to produce fruit, and more than just one. So how do we do it? How do we channel the Spirit? All right, so I'll hand off the mic now, so who's our first, our first presenter is? Bob. So Bob's going to come up and talk to us about the financial situation of the church. And to give you an idea of how the format of this goes, after each one of our committee areas presents, there's going to be a time of questions for that specific group. So you can ask Bob about all the financial stuff you'd ever want to know, and I guarantee he will speak right off the cuff because it's fresh in his mind.
If you can't, Wanda can.
If you can't, Wanda's here, and we always have our question board that we can take back and get back to you later. So thank you, Bob.
Want I permit it to take my mask off?
Yes.
You're far enough away.
No, put it back on.
Always count on Carl.
Only Carl. We were asking in the finance committee to put together some highlights and some summaries of this past year, and this is in your handout, so I'll just go through it. Contributions, pledges, and regular giving, listed on our church's monthly financial statement are many items, but probably none more important than this category. This is the income that pays for our church's expenses. We are so pleased to report that through July of this year, our members have given the church almost 98% of what our financial team projected at the beginning of the year. That is an amazing accomplishment, given the church's closure, the flood that we have experienced, we're so very grateful and we're so very blessed. That's an amazing accomplishment, it really is. We had two different government loans that helped us, helped us through the pandemic, one of them in 2020 and the other one this year. They totaled between the two of them about $25,000. Now, we don't have to pay that back. We were forgiven the first loan and we have every reason to believe we will be forgiven the second loan. We kind of think that that's, that's all the government's going to do, so those loans are over. Eventually, our church will be fully open. It is our expectation that giving will increase and at that point, what would make up for the loss of the loan money that we had received from the federal government. So when we get that open, we expect the giving to increase. The third thing we had was flood relief. There had been a separate line item set up in our financial statement to track the special donations given to Trinity from many entities across the country. This account currently has approximately $16,000 in it, and it grows each week. This money will be used for items not covered under the church's insurance policy. Fourth thing we had, Trinity United Methodist Leveling Foundation. Our foundation currently has a balance of, on your handouts, it probably says 74,000, 75? Well, I did a recent check just yesterday and it's at $75,491. This fund has grown considerably over the last couple of years due to the generosity of many of our members. And we transferred some funds from the Fennig estate. And we have a good conservative investment strategy. We believe we've established a good start to our church's foundation and look forward to future activities that will benefit our foundation. In summary, our members have shown rock-solid commitment to making sure this wonderful little church of ours survives. These last couple of years have been rough, financially and mentally. We have survived a pandemic and a disastrous flood. The challenges to our church have been many and are not over. Some say facing adversity makes you strong. Well, we're blessed to have a bunch of superheroes in our church that have faced these challenges with strength, determination, and absolute faith. God has blessed these members with many talents. Trinity will survive and thrive in the future. This is from Wanda, Debbie, and from myself. Anybody got any questions?
Bob, can you tell the audience online if they can text me, if they cannot, write into the chat box?
You can text, no, the pastor, if you have any questions. How many people are on right now?
We've oscillated between 10 and 12 viewers, so.
Anybody here got anything? It's okay to ask, I may not have the answer, but far away. Okay.
No mention too, we have detailed financials up here. There's a couple of packages. If you would like to take a copy, we'll also be sending them out with the materials. And so that information's all available to you. It's a lot of numbers. We debated whether to give everybody copies, but it's a lot of detail. Bob kind of gave you the high-level overview of kind of where we are in total from a finance standpoint. And I just want to thank our finance team. It takes a lot to keep up with the finances of a church, and we have a super team. Really, between Wanda. Does anybody have any other questions?
We lost the online audience, so because when you're moving the camera around, they got disconnected, so if we could, we'll just keep it there. They're back on now.
And Wanda can also, she's also prepared a summary that takes out the PPP money and the flood money and the money from the Fennigs, which were designated, we were specifically going to do some window, here's safety glass windows, but she's also prepared a few of the financials without that money, because that's the kind of money that we'll only see this year. It's not a real indication of the health of the church on an ongoing basis. So that information's available, the financials, we'll send it out. If you were to just look at the bottom line, year-to-date financials, we are looking really good, but that is because we also have gotten a lot of help from our PPP loans and other donations. The flood money's also in the budget as well, so you're welcome to look through it and ask any questions of Wanda specifically, and we'll get those up to you as well. Okay, next, you will see the shortest report of all in your package. SPR team, it's been an interesting year, and right now, we have two people on the payroll. That's for a lot of reasons. One, the building hasn't been open, the pandemic, we're not in our building, and financially, you know, struggling to be able to justify in some cases some paid positions that we'd love to have, we'll look at again for next year, but right now, where we are, we're relying on volunteers, and we have some wonderful volunteers who are kind of filling in, and I'll call that Debbie Gruber for one. She's been filling in in addition to a full-time job, she's been filling in as secretary and doing her, her music role is paid, but her secretarial role is not, and she's just kind of kept things going. And as have other folks.
For three years.
For three years, she's reminding us. So she is a true blessing, and there are many others that have stepped in to help us. So SPR really hasn't had a whole lot of work to do. Normally, they would be responsible for doing staff evaluations, et cetera. Normally, they would be responsible for doing staff evaluations, et cetera, and checking in with our staff, and we just don't have a big staff right now. Hopefully, in the future, we can build that back up. So that's the shortest report. Wendy Yates is not here today, but Patty Lux is also here, and I think Kathy Buller's also on the mission team. So any questions?
And Marcia.
And Marcia, there you are, there you are. So these ladies form, with Wendy, form our mission team. And I'll tell you, when I looked at the report that Wendy sent in, she's not able to be here today, but they'll be here to ask, answer any questions you have on the report. This really impressed me, it shows that even in the midst of a pandemic and a flood, we're still serving our community and our congregation. And so if you, if you would please look through these opportunities. If you have any ideas for the mission team, please let them know. If you have any questions about any of the upcoming activities, this is a great time for you to ask them. So just take a look at all we're involved in, in the midst of a lot of stuff that occurs right now. That's something for us to really be proud of. So I'm just gonna open it up, since we have those folks here, and see if you have any questions about any of the upcoming activities. Or if you have any suggestions, leave a line for me. Is this? What, I'm sorry.
Is this building that you're gonna work on, is that like a week's project, or two weeks' project, or what? You don't say.
The faith build?
Yes.
Oh, faith build is just one day.
Just, okay.
Yeah, I don't know, how many people have been on the faith build for Habitat? A lot of you are, and a lot of you I know have been actively involved in Habitat. That's a great opportunity, and you do not have to get up on ladders, I don't get up on ladders. But Kathy Parker stood up, I've seen her. I've seen her painting the eaves of the house, and I'm, I'm not going up there. So there's plenty, always something to do, you can bring lunch for the crew. And you'll learn a lot about Habitat while you're there, and it's a great way to serve the community. We were last year the first church to do a faith build, as they reopened faith builds after, after we were shut down from the pandemic. We were the first church to have a crew on the site. And it's a very rewarding experience, and I know there's room for one more person in that October ninth build. So if you would like to join, please see one of the members of the, of the mission team. Kathy, I've forgotten to mention you, you're on the mission team as well, aren't you?
Yes, uh, can I?
Yes, sure.
Probably.
I'm thinking that a lot of you have no idea what this free little pantry is about. And just wanted to tell you, there is one, and it's not too far from here. It's, it's at the corner, oh, it's on Garfield, about thirteenth, on the northwest side. And it's a place where you can leave non-perishable goods, and people who are in need of them can come and take them. And apparently, apparently, there's a whole lot of people who need those things. And so instead of at times going to the food pantry for stuff, that's something. And one of the things we've talked about is hopefully being able to, once we reopen, to, to have a part of the storeroom off the kitchen as being a place where we can, can store stuff short-term for them as they have, as they have gotten a major order in, because they do have some money. And money is a good thing, and so stop by and see what it is. And that's just a simple way we can give.
One of the things we've been talking about in church council is how can we use our building in other ways? You know, how can we serve our community? And so Kathy just gave a good example of a way that we're gonna try to help our community and use our building to help them store, store dishes they have right now. Okay, the next area, so we just talked about the short, shortest report for SPR. Get ready to get to the longest report. The trustees team has been unbelievably busy this year. Leading up until the flood, they had a lot of projects they were working on. And so they broke their report into two, there's the before the flood, and there's after the flood. So we're gonna, we're gonna let them tell you, what were we working on, what was the state of our building before the flood? And then, we're gonna have Renee give an update on where are we now with the restoration, and what kind of help is needed. So it's broken into two sections, Mark did the write-up on the before the flood. Mark, are you presenting, or is Renee? You are, okay, come on up.
Standing about right here.
Okay. So I knew I shouldn't move around as much as I was, right?
I wish I could say the trustees weren't busy this year, but that wasn't the case. I, you know, you've got the report in front of you, I'll kinda go over it, and then I'll let Renee take over the longest part of it. You know, as trustees, we have had a sudden change in directions in church repair and projects since our last church council meeting. Here, suddenly thrust into restoring a flood damaged church from, oh, a church that hadn't been in for a year and doing a few projects that were left hanging. One of the most noticeable, back at church was, many of you noticed it, the lawn was all of a sudden not looking so good. It was, had some huge dead spots in it. We had to get a new contractor, who was gonna be mowing it. But with the great work of Rich Morgan, I don't see him here. Kathy Parker, Mike Corde. We actually got the lawn reseated, dug up, it's actually looking pretty good. If you haven't been by it, it's nice and green. We found a new contractor to mow for us. Kathy was great helping getting our sprinkler system back, back in working order. There, too, we had a couple floods going on. So we had floods inside, we had floods outside. Fortunately, the outside flood was much easier to take care of. So as far as the lawn, I think we're in pretty good shape on that one. The parking lot, we had talked about resealing it. And we were wondering how we were gonna come up with that money. That's kinda been shuffled back. It was recommended to us anyway that we would do that in the spring, would be the best time to reseal it. So we are pushing that back in the spring, we'll see how we look after the restoration of our church. Window projects, well, you know, that one definitely got shuffled back. One thing we're gonna look at is, I know a lot of the cranks in the main sanctuary don't work. Well, during the flood restoration, we had to open and close a lot of windows in that church. And we came to realize that we can't get the cranks replacements in the sanctuary, they're, they're not available. But there's many cranks around the church that actually work still, so we're gonna check and see if maybe we can get some more of the sanctuary windows to work. But as far as replacing the windows, well, that's another great line item that might take a few years to save up to take care of. Some of the other projects we had going, had now, that were on the back burner, such as replacing carpets, painting in the sanctuary, it all been kinda moved up. Update their electrical, we definitely found that after, you know, the flood, that we had to update our electrical system, which we were really thinking about doing that right off the bat, but it's kinda got moved up. And as far as, you know, the church, nothing that was before the restoration is still there, but hasn't been forgotten about. But we'll re-approach them after the first of the year, which I'm hoping that we will be to our church by at least, I wanna say, October, whatever. And we'll need lots of volunteers to probably put it back together that we had to take apart. Other than that, that's about all I have for before the restoration. I'm sure Renee had a lot to talk about, about the restoration. So I guess I'll hand it over to Renee. And if you want, do any questions and answers?
Oh, we have a question.
We got a question, we get it.
What about the asbestos?
That's me.
That'll be, that's for the restoration.
Why don't we just hold Q and A for after Renee's piece? And if you have any questions about what Mark talked about, or Renee, they'll both be here to answer. She's renovating our roof.
Sorry, guys, let me get my other part.
I didn't get pedals for you.
I can play the piano.
People online can see it too.
Can we see that?
Well, you didn't say.
Yeah, and it looks like they'll be able to keep some of it.
Okay. All right. That's up to him.
I, I think we'll be okay.
Thanks. So good to get those members off. First off, if you don't know me, I'm Renee Trinley Coria. I am on the trustees, and I was the first person called to come shot off the ladder, 'cause I live the closest. Anyways, I wanna say a great big thank you to the committee. And our insurance has been a blessing, and has its own contentious areas of writing checks, which we had talked about a little bit earlier. But I'd like my committee to raise their hands, and I will make sure I mention who they are. On our committee, we have Don and Wanda Kearns, Mark Thompson, John Lex, Bob Trinley, Charlotte Kate, and Rich Morgan, along with me. I am dealing with the insurance company, I am your go-between, between them and you. So they deal with me, and I deal with you, and then I deal with the subs, and then I deal back with the insurance company. So there are days I get a little upset with them when they don't respond to our calls. This board kinda tells you, I did it in two parts. The flood, and Noah's ark, and God gave us a rainbow as a promise of what's to come. And the promise of what's to come is how great our church is gonna be when we get this back open. And I wanted to read a letter that somebody had written in, and that was Kyle Ames. It says, "We love this place, and want to see it look amazing, and know that it's really well taken care of. On another note, no matter which way we decide to go, we are so excited and hopeful that we can do what we're trying to get done, are these updates. Not just fixtures and behind-the-scenes items, which are important, but the overall look and feel of the church. I do believe this will help us to bring in younger members, and it'll give us a, hate to say this, outdated feeling, and we'll have a new, updated look that newcomers will want to come and enjoy. I do believe this will look amazing, and hopefully give us some new people coming through our door. Thanks for all the work that you're doing and putting in the extra time for this amazing project. Looking forward to opening the church, having a big grand opening, and we have an amazing family at this church. Thank you, Kyle Ames." With that being said, that's kind of the way that we're looking. Since we have to do this, let's do it right. 'Cause there's some things that we can't go back and do later. One of the things that we can't go back and do would be change the lights in the sanctuary, the really tall ones, and the old ones on the side, 'cause we can't move the pews again. It's quite the challenge to move the pews, and we have to move them to do the flooring anyways. So now is the time to do some of this stuff that we can't go back and do. One of the things that we're looking at, and I have asked our subs to do, was to make sure that they gave us side bids for our church. Which, when they came in to bid for insurance stuff, I said, "Hey, you know, our chancel area really needs some in carpeting, give us an option bid for that. And remember, be nice to us, we're giving you a lot of money for the rest, so we want you to be nice." So they did. It was the same with the electricians, and the same with the painters. On this, you'll see the list of the subs that have been picked. The ones that have little marks next to them have been members of our church, or are members of our church, okay? We are keeping the money local, it's important to keep our community going. So you'll see that. I would like everybody to come up when they're done and take a look at this board, and it'll be hanging around. I don't know, the pastor's gonna have it, right? So over here is the cause of our problems, and that's what's pictures from the flood. This talks about old lights versus the new lights that we've been looking at, and the same with on this side. We have great options in our hands right now to make our church updated, new, lovely. And God's put us in this position for a reason, we don't know where we're going, but we know He's leading us, and He never leads us in a bad direction. Have an interior decorator coming in later this week to talk to me about some colors for our sanctuary and a few other places. We have great expectations. I will let you know that as far as the asbestos goes, everything that was asbestos is being encapsulated, and so it's not a problem. All right, it was mostly in the old flooring, and it was actually under the flooring, it was the glue that was holding it down. So whatever came up, came off, and got thrown away properly, and the rest of it's being encapsulated, so it is not worrying, which is great for us, 'cause it's gonna save us two to three weeks on our schedule. And the insurance company has approved where we're going with that, so it's not a concern, all right? The electrician has been great, updating our electricity. Our electricity was original from when they built the church, and we burned those breakers out within the first few days of the flood, because we were burning, running so much electricity. We had eighty fans and ninety humidifiers running twenty-four seven. And I was unplugging anything we weren't using, so that we could push the electricity to them, and we were still bringing out breakers. So Rich Hoffman and his crew came in and updated that for us, and that'll be a godsend in the long run. And he's going to mark all of our breaker boxes, they're all gonna have names like Matthew, Mark, Luke. Hopefully, there's someone who's on around there. So we are getting those updated. The one big caveat that I wanna bring up to you guys, and it's on this board, but I'm gonna read it for you, was from our lighting efficiency gentleman, and it's right here. It says, "Overall lighting input wattage will be reduced by seventy-five to eighty-five percent over the existing. Utility savings will be determined by the facility usage based on eighteen-hundred to two-thousand hours of, of operation. Annual electricity savings would be one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars annual. Maintenance and material savings would be four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Total annual estimated savings for updating all the electricity will be two thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars." So by us changing our lighting and going to LED, we're going to be reducing our electrical bill, we're not gonna be lighting the light bulbs, we're not gonna be sending Mark and I up there to change them. These are things that are going to last us twenty-plus years. I don't know, but I'm thinking about how old I'll be in twenty years, and I'm thinking, I'm not crawling no darn ladder to go and change the light bulb. So that is one of the big opponents for us changing a lot of the lighting in the church. And you'll see on one of your papers that, thank God for Cindy Utley, who's my office manager, and Charlotte, who helped us come up with this, we'll show you. Because some people came to me and said, "We want to pick the light item to pay for." So there's numbers on him. These numbers are everything that's above what the insurance company is paying for. Like it says, "The chancel carpeting," that's just up there where the pastor stands, where you kneel, the organist is. "We wanna get rid of that red gray carpeting, so that our new carpeting is going to look even better." "Why only do half of the space?" So then the other one is the chancel lighting. That's taking off these big square lights, these side lights, the upper lights that look like giant eyeballs in the chancel area. Changing all of those, that's that cost. Changing all of those, that's that cost. Do keep in mind, we are getting a rebate back and so that's off of that. To paint the chancel area is that $1,400 from Kyle. Alright? And then updating the rest of the lighting throughout the church. So the church is 71 years old. We have lighting in some of the closets that is original. Some of it isn't legal anymore either. And we keep finding a few things that we go, "Hey, what's that? Oh, that's not good. We, oh, we gotta change that." So there's some of those things that we kind of have to do while we're there. Now, anybody that's a sub will know that it's just better to do stuff while you're there than to come back in five to six months or in a year or two years because things change. So those are what those are. The one that says, "Updatin' original carpet," that is the lovely orange carpeting in the storage room down by the nursery. And so we've given you options. If you, if you want to give to one of these, just fill this out, leave it with us. If you just want to give to the overall pot, please do. There's going to be stuff that we haven't foreseen, like when I took the old curtains down in back that have to be dry cleaned before we put them back up. We need some new signage in the church. There's a few things like that that's going to come up. If you don't have the money to give, come and see us in October when we're putting the church back together. Because trust me, we've torn it up. I have pews in places they shouldn't be and I have to move more pews. And if they're stuck in a place, it's still going to get stuck. It's like I now have to empty the nursery. It's now going into the EAA room so that carpet can get ripped out and replaced. The insurance company just decided two weeks ago that now that carpeting needs to go because the cleaning companies don't think they can save it. So there's things like that as we roll along that come up to me and go, "Oh, by the way, we need to, can we? How do we get there?" And I'm the, I am the project person for that. Is there any questions out there? Yes, ma'am?
How much money can we get a rebate for the lighting?
The rebate on the lighting is just under $6,000 and it's already removed from that cost. And that's why we had a lighting efficiency expert. He came in, he looked at the lights and said, "Okay, that light is using this much electricity. We can move to this kind of lighting and it'll save us." So, like, the lights in the chancel area, he says, "Okay, these lights are old. They're using this much power. We can replace them with these lights." And you're gonna, it's going to cost you, say, $125, but you're going to get 75 back of an inner rebate. So it's going to kind of offset the cost of installing those things. And you're going to get 20 years wide wattage out of that for, you know, you won't have to worry about changing those light bulbs. So we have things like that where the lighting expert came in and said, "Okay, these have to go. This is what this is going to cover and this is, this is what the better fit's going to be." And he's filling out all the paperwork for the rebates, not me, because he knows what they need to know. He's the lighting expert. That's his job. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
Was there any damage or anything to the heating and air conditioning units? Or does anything change today or?
The day before the flood, I had the, I had the air conditioning fixed. And then when the flood hit, I had to turn it off and turn the heat on. So, no, the heating and air are completely fine. I literally baked the church. And I want you guys to understand something. Because our church is old and it's brick and plaster and lath and steel was our saving grace, because if this was a wood structure, we would have been out for over a year doing tearouts, rebuilds, rebuild back, and the amount of money we would have spent would have been astronomical. Because we have a brick-and-mortar building and we have in-floor heating, we were able to turn on the heat and bake the church and get the moisture out. And there's no insulation in there, so that saved us there too. So we did have some saving graces from this flood, so realize that. There was another church in Nebraska that just got flooded. It didn't have nearly as much water as us and they're going to be out for eight months to 10 months because they have to tear out all the flooring and re-sheet it all and they have to treat all the wood. We don't have that. We are very lucky in that aspect. So older churches sometimes are better. Does that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any more questions about the asbestos? It's all being encapsulated. It was mostly in the flooring and it was mostly the glue that was holding the flooring down is where the asbestos was. There was one other spot and it was the Old Road Cove base and the other company removed it safely and it's done. So don't have to worry about that.
The lighting in the sanctuary is all, all being replaced?
That's what we need to do because with everything out of the way, yeah, because we have to put scaffolding up in there. All the speakers, the old speakers along the side, these triangle ones, they're all going. We're going to have a nice, new, clean look. These are the replacement lights right here for those lights that shine up on the side. They're beautiful. They're over at the church right now. We're going to bid, we're going to vote on them on Wednesday. My committee has been great. And we mentioned who they are. We sit down, we look at the numbers. The insurance company was right along with us and the insurance company did not argue with us at all about anything that we could. They were very pleased with how we did it. We got it done. And we have to meet their expectations and they were happy.
And if you do want to donate to any of these special projects, if you'll fill this out or drop me a note or something, that donation will be kept confidential like all other donations to the church. And I will keep Renee posted on, "Okay, we've got donations to cover this project," or whatever. So just know that your donations are confidential like they always have been.
So Debbie was just saying that all donations that you give towards the flood will be confidential. You can turn those into hers. She notifies me when we stand with that. Now, if I get really lucky and three people say they want to pay for the carpet for the chancel area, we'll do a drawing. And one will win and I'll ask the other two to donate it to something else. We have, we have plenty of room for usage. But for the most part, we have been very lucky. We believe the sound system was saved. Hallelujah. Thank the Lord. Yes. So, but there's, there's areas and it's not one area. It's over a vast area. So we're getting there. The dry cleaners start on Monday. The painters have already started. And we're moving along and I hope to have us back in our church late in October. Because we're having a crap show, a big sale. Because the sanctuary is easier to put together than any other part of the church. Literally, it'll be done first before anything else, so I'm not even worried about it.
Fellowship.
The fellowship. Yeah. That'll be the easiest one to put together out of everything in the church. The committee meets on Wednesday to discuss the carpeting and flooring choices and the lighting choices. Charlotte, do you have anything else to add to this?
You've done a great job.
Thank you. Any more questions? Any questions online?
Not, nothing yet.
Okay. You know you can always call and ask. You can let Debbie Hoover know. She'll call me. I will call you, talk to you personally. If there's something you want to see, know otherwise, I will help you get there. I hope, I really hope that God touches your heart and shows you what we can be and where we're going and help us to get there. And that's all I've got.
I think we're going to find a proper way to thank this Renee and this flood restoration team because they are doing the hard work to get us back in our church home. But I think for now, thank you.
Renee is doing all the work.
All the work? I believe it. Hold on one second. You want me to move that board? No, I'm good. We're good. And I just also wanted a little personal testimony. I went in last, last Friday, yes?
Thursday.
Thursday. Can't remember. And to make copies for today. And while I was in there, I was looking at Renee. We happened to be there. And she was so excited. She was showing me these lighting fixtures and the carpet lady showed up while I was there and they're laying out samples of flooring and I know the decisions haven't been made on which one they're going to pick and we trust that team implicitly to do that. But I just was, we're standing in the front of the sanctuary and I'm looking at the flooring and the new carpet samples and I just got chills. Honestly did. Because our, our church was already beautiful. It is going to be amazing when we go back in. So there is a reason why this happened. We don't know what it is, but we're going to be back and we're going to have a beautiful church home that we'll all enjoy for many years to come. So thank you, God, again, for all you're doing. I really appreciate it. Okay, next topic. We talked about earlier how important transparency and communications has been to our church council. And I'm sure there've been times we've fallen short. But I want you to know that we have made every effort, especially during the pandemic, to try to communicate with everyone, whether you were, whether we were in person or all at home. We've tried to make sure that everybody knew what was going on in the church and why decisions were made the way they were. And so we had to make some tough decisions over the last two years and probably not everybody agreed with all of our decisions, but we did the best that we could to keep our church community safe and to do the right thing for our church family. So I, we've made a list of all the ways we're communicating today. And one thing I want to highlight to you, I've heard a couple of people lately say, "I'd really rather just go back to getting something in the mail." I don't have time to read my email or whatever. It's just my personal preference. We have, I want to make sure everybody knew, we have a list currently of 22 people that Debbie mails all kinds of things to. So if you've kind of thought about this a little bit and you'd really rather get things through the mail than email or online, reach out to Debbie. We'll, we'll be happy to send you all the information that everyone else receives in a mail format. So just wanted to point that out. And we, there's a list of all the different ways we communicate, but as I mentioned earlier, we can always do better. So I just wanted to ask everyone, do you have, give any other ideas for us in terms of how we can better communicate with our church family? If you do, we'd love to get your feedback today and we'll make note of it and definitely take it into our planning. So I just want to open it up, see if anybody has any thoughts while we're here together. I know you guys and you're not dislocating. Any other thoughts? Okay. If you think of anything later, please reach out to one of the council members. Again, always room for improvement. We're here to serve you. We're your church council and we're here to serve you. There's also a cage here. I've had a lot of people say, "How can I help?" We have a lot of opportunities. Pastor Bryson mentioned the snack brigade. Renee has mentioned she's going to need a lot of help in the upcoming weeks with foot and bat pews or bibles or I walked around the church. She's right. Everything is all over the place.
And it's dusty.
And it's dusty. We need people who like to clean. And I know some people here like to clean. So we're going to need your help. If you're willing to help, we'll work with whatever physical capabilities you have and what you prefer to do and just see Renee. And we'll put you on the list and when she's ready for us, we'll, we'll have a team ready to help her. We have a congregation care team. Kathy Bullard leads it up. If you would like to, if you're not, if you feel like you can, you're good at calling people, sending cards, reaching out to our church community, especially those that cannot make it to church, reach out to Kathy. She needs more people. She doesn't have enough people to do this. And this is a very important ministry that everyone in here can do. So just want to make sure you're aware of that. We need some program leaders. We need to start a senior group, again. We need somebody who's willing to lead that. Back in the day, it used to be Darlene cleaning with the empty nesters. We need something like that, again. So if that's something you're called to do, please see Pastor Bryson and we'd love to help support you in that. Bible studies, outreach to our elders. Please reach out if you can help in those areas. Church council leaders. We've got an opening right now on SPR. So if you'd like to join the church council immediately, we have an opening. And we'll have another opening, we have another one for next year. So please consider, we may have some other openings as well. So if you're interested in being on church council, you want to be involved in the decisions of the church, it's once-a-month meeting and obviously depending on the team you're on, there's some work outside. But it's a really important role and it's important for us to have a strong leadership team. So if you're so called to do so, please reach out to myself or Pastor. We'll be working on a list for office volunteers. We want to get that going again when we're back in the, in the church. So if you'd like to be an office volunteer, reach out to Debbie. She'll be collecting names. And I will go through all of these. You can read them as well as I can, but please, if you're called to do any of these things, this is what we need your help with. And we can't do it with just a handful of people. It takes all of us together to work together and keep this church thriving and growing into the future. And then last, I just included, these are the members of church council and I know that Debbie puts this in the webmail every week, but if you have any suggestions, you can reach out to anybody on this list, whoever you're comfortable with. And we would love to get your feedback. We don't have all the answers. We need you. So with that, I think we're going to just open it up for any general Q and A, see if there's anything you thought of while I was rambling. So I got a blank sheet here. So if you're, if there's any suggestions, questions that you haven't been able to, to speak about, now's your chance. So just want to open it up for question and answer. Suggestions. Did we answer all your questions?
I take it the cleaning lady we have now has been suspended until we're back?
The question is, "The cleaning lady?"
I got that.
Okay. Hold on a second. Do you need to come on up?
So the insurance company is paying to clean the church when we're done. So you will see that she is one of our prominent people in our church. I asked her to give us a bid. She says, "Well, there's some areas that are going to need a lot of cleaning. There's some areas that's not." And I says, "Wash all the inside windows." So she's not cleaning inside covers, but she is cleaning everywhere else. So just keep in mind, if you come to the church, be careful what door you come to. But she is doing the majority of the cleaning. She, I have talked to her. Do you have any more questions about her? Okay. I figured it was only nice since we already had it contracted that she had the first chance to give us a bid and the insurance company liked it, so we're, we're good. Anything else?
Any other questions, suggestions? I'd also like to invite you, we are planning to, once we get a date from Renee, when we think we're going to be back in our church, we're planning to do a big celebration. And we need some feedback from you on what you think we should do that day. We're obviously going to be thanking the restoration team and celebrating and doing tours of our building and obviously worshiping together for the first time in our newly improved church. But we want some ideas from you on how we can have a fun way of celebrating that we're all back together in our, in our church home. So if you have any thoughts, please reach out again to anybody on the church council and we'll be working on planning that event in the next church council meeting. If you'd like to be involved in the planning, we'll, we'll set up a team and we'll pull together committees. We have those sort of committees. So looking forward to that day and it will come soon when we're all back together again. Okay. Do you have any last questions? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Pastor Bryson to close us out.
So I just want to double and put this out. If there are any other questions, please, by all means, track me down, ask right now. We're still in session. I know there's many things going on, many things people are wondering about, so now's the time. Please don't be silent. If you've got something to, to ask, either if you're here or if you're online, please bring it up. We'll try our best to answer it. I can't see anymore, but we're here for you. Please, please come talk to us. All right, friends, so seeing no other contributions, thank you all for being here today and for being the core of this church. I can't express how much it means to me that 40 of you or 35, 40 of you will be here and then we'd have another 10 to 12 online, people who are eager to see our church get back on its feet and continue to do the awesome ministry we're known for. So blessings to each and every one of you and may we go out and just continue to serve. We're still in our ark here. The flood's still kind of going on, but we're being shaped and we're being better by this. but we're being shaped and we're being better by the Spirit day by day. So we'll go out and show the world that. Let's go forth with this blessing now. Gracious God, we are grateful for the hearty souls that is Trinity United Methodist Church. We're blessed by all the gifts of the people here, by all the dedication to your, to your cause. Now draw us even closer together. Help us to get the information out about everything that's going on here. Help us to show people that it's not all doom and gloom. There is hope. There is potential. We can transform our building. We can transform our lives because of your grace, because your spirit is with us and empowering us, loving us, and sending us out into the world. We can do all things through you. You give us strength, as Scripture would say. So let us remember that no matter where we go and no matter who we meet. And may we be blessed miniature versions of your Son, Jesus Christ, showing his light and life to all we meet. Send us out now to do that holy word, and send us out blessed in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. All right, thank you, friends. And again, remember, any questions, let us know. And folks online, we'll have more stuff out shortly, the complete version, because we had to cut this in two accidentally, the complete version of this presentation we have shortly. And we'll have images and information of everything. You've seen it. Thank you.